Good evening and happy to hear everyone and welcome to the Town Council Regular Session Meeting for January 15, 2025. We will begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. And this evening, I am delighted to announce that tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Sam Connolly and Lila Fecto from PAC 201. Mr. Connolly and Ms. Fecto, if you could lead us, please.
Please rise and pledge allegiance. Please join me on the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Mr. Connolly and Ms. Fecto, we are so pleased to have you here. And in recognition of your contributions to the community of Newmarket, we'd like to give you these. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we understand that PAC 201 wanted to learn a little bit about people in public office, so I have asked two of our councilors this evening to talk a little bit about how they came to be on the council. We will start with Councilor Glazebrook.
Hi, I'm Councilor Justin Glazebrook, and I've been on the council for a little over two years. And I was appointed to the position originally, which means instead of being elected from votes from the town, I put in my name and came in and met and I was voted on by the members that were sitting here. And then I was later elected by the town. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Councilor Ward.
Hello, I'm Councilor Ward. I used to be a reporter who covered the town of Newmarket here, so I used to come sit pretty much where you were for a long time and write on all this stuff. And when I moved to town, I decided I wanted to take part of it. And much like Councilor Glazebrook, there was an opening, someone on the council had to retire early for other personal reasons. And I went before the board, I explained why I wanted to be a councilor, and they voted me in. And then after that, the next regular town election, the town of Newmarket voted me in, and it was a great honor. It's been near three years, I believe, if for me, so.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Fecto, and thank you, Councilor Ward.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure. Okay, next item on the agenda is roll call and six concerns here, I think Council Blackstone is excused this evening. And the third item on our agenda is public forum. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Holding just in case. And seeing none, we will close public forum at 7:04. Item four on our agenda is to consider the acceptance of minutes, and we have one set of minutes this evening, councilors, and that is the regular meeting minutes for December 18, 2024. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Councilor White, thank you, Councilor Ward. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Councilor Glazebrook?
Aye.
Councilor Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblin?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes six there. Excellent, and moving right on to item five, to consider the nominations, appointments, and elections. This evening, we have one, and that is the appointment of Carol Grulla, hope I'm saying that correctly, to the Public Transportation Advisory Committee with a term expiration of April 2027. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this nomination.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councilor Ward, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Dorblin. Councilor Dorblin, I know that you had written a recommendation for this appointment, do you care to speak to it?
Sure, I actually approached Ms. Grulla to consider serving on the committee after she or her, she was recommended to me to do so. She brings decades of professional experience in transportation to the table for us, and she is a coast board member, she operates a transportation service out of the Exeter-Hampton area, and is and would be a wonderful addition to the Public Transportation Advisory Committee for Newmarket.
Thank you so much, Councilor Dorblin. Any discussion on Ms. Grulla's application? And I'll just add, yes, I was, I was so impressed and so delighted that we'll have somebody with that level of experience on the, on the, on the committee, so, kudos. Seeing no other discussion, if you could call the roll, please. Councilor Glazebrook?
Aye.
Councilor Lamontina?
Aye.
Councilor Dorblin?
Aye.
Councilor White?
Aye.
Councilor Ward?
Aye.
Councilor Connolly?
Aye.
Motion passes six there. Excellent, and item number six is reported to Town Manager, so this time I will turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First item on my written report is that, that although not strictly required by the town charter, Bond Council informed us that he strongly recommends that we notice and hold the required public hearings on the three bonds we proposed this coming year before the town's deliberative session. Our charter is odd that it actually has, we can hold a public hearing, have to hold it after deliberative session, they never change the charter when they switch to the SB2 form, but he highly recommends that we do. So we are scheduling a special meeting of the council on Wednesday, January 29, at 6:00 PM to hold a public hearing. We just need a quorum if there's something else going on that, we just need to have that public hearing. Also on the agenda tonight are the three, our three resolutions to put the bonds on the ballot. We were going through everything we had, we couldn't find a record that we actually, I think we just talked about it so much that we never voted. That's what, that's what we're all saying, we could not find a record of it. So we're putting it again, we're asking to suspend the rules to vote on it this evening. After that, I'm gonna have warrants for you to sign to, for the election. Three of them have two signature pages and one has one page that you sign. And to go along with that, just a reminder that deliberative session is Saturday, February 25, at 9:00 AM at the Newmarket Junior Senior High School, please plan on attending. The next is that the town received an invite from the Seacoast Fire Chief Fire Officers' Mutual Aid District regarding the Exeter Hospital Ceasing Paramedic Intercept Service on March 21 of this year. A working group of fire chiefs is creating a replacement program focusing on service, cost, and sustainability. We appreciate their efforts, but after discussing with the fire chief, there are some concerns. First is the location of the equipment response times, their proposed location is in Brentwood, may not benefit Newmarket, it adds unnecessary travel, that's the hospital's en route, or we go to Portsmouth or Dover, so it doesn't really make sense to have to go to Brentwood for an intercept. Future funding sources, they did receive a grant this year from the hospital, but there's no long-term financial viability. Right now, we don't know where they get the money after year one. And one of the issues would be burdens us financially because we're one of the larger communities that they mentioned. And finally, we have our own medics right now who have been managing to, but the paramedics have been covering that already for us, and the fire chief has indicated he's talked with McGregor and Durham that we would be merging some services, not services, but backing each other up if need be for a paramedic service. So just at this point in time, it's not a participation, we're not gonna participate at this time, but we will get more information if it changes in the, in the future, we'd definitely be interested, but it just doesn't make sense to, if we have a paramedic situation, having ambulance go all the way to Brentwood to go to the Exeter Hospital. So. The next item is that we, a police announced that our application for a road safety audit was approved, and the town identified several safety concerns at the Bennett Way Terrace Drive area on the segment of Exeter Road. And there are currently no traffic lights or pedestrian signals for, in that area. Police Department has reported an increase in accidents involving pedestrians or pedestrian-related factors at the intersection. Pedestrians required to cross multiple travel lanes in each direction, which poses a significant risk. It's common for one southbound vehicle to stop to allow a pedestrian cross and obscuring the view of a second southbound vehicle, so we have a lot of accidents in that area. The audit will be conducted by an interdisciplinary team consisting of DOT, their engineering consultants, Traffic Regional Planning Commission, the town, and all other relevant stakeholders. We actually had our meeting yesterday, so if you saw a bunch of people with fluorescent vests in the street around the police station, that's what was going on. And finally, the assessors reviewed, the state assessors, the Department of Revenue Administration looked at our sales analysis from the reevaluation, the various statistical indications aligned with what we thought, and as of estimated in the November 21 memo from the assessors, the town's overall median ratio is at 96%. So even after the revaluation, we're not at 100%. It's just you can't get there usually because of the market, and they meet the new assessment guidelines, and it effectively aligned assessments with current market values while maintaining equity. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much, Town Manager. Any questions or discussion with Town Manager?
Just, what is COD and PRD?
Coefficient of Disbursement, and I'm trying to remember what PRD is off the top of my head.
What does it mean?
It's, 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 I, it's, I don't know exactly, I'd have to look it up, but I know it's a, it's an assessing term that you gotta look at the numbers, I, I will find that out.
No, it's not really, I was just kind of, okay.
I appreciate you asking that, because I was, I felt really uncomfortable asking, it's like, I don't want to admit I don't know what this is. So yeah, if you could find, that would be great. Other questions for the Town Manager? You kind of answered one of the ones that I had, which is, what are the, what's involved in the audit? You said there's people that have been forced to ask, yay, but what, what will they be doing?
They're going to study the area, come up with recommendations on how to, if there's a problem, fix the problem, and then next steps. Like, what do we, where do we go from there? I mean, they talked everything from, are the roads too, is the road too wide there? Is there other weight means, for example, street stoplights or roundabouts to control traffic in that area? Is there too many driveway cutouts in that area? Those kind of things they discuss, and then they'll just get together, write a report, and give it back to us to figure out what's the next steps.
Awesome, I'm really clever doing that, I think this is a, it's a true need, it's a, it's a kind of a scary intersection. Okay, any other questions for the Town Manager? Okay, thank you very much. The next aspect of the report of the Town Manager is department reports, are there any comments or questions about the department reports this month?
Oh, so that's for committee reports?
Okay. Councilor Lamontina?
Once again, I think our police department and fire department just do an unbelievable job, especially the police department, some of the social issues that they run into, just, you know, it's tough, it's amazing.
It is tough.
And there's some funny ones in there, too, if it's, let's go over there.
Be careful out there, smushy. Thank you, Councilor Lamontina. Other comments on the department reports? I have a few. I was really happy to see the drop in service calls this year, I thought that was cool. For the police, the rental scam was kind of creepy, and I didn't know whether it was a trend, and I wondered if it was, if it was possible or allowable to give folks a heads up on the, like, on the Newmarket Facebook page or something like that? Just about taking, you know, taking deposits for your property and just, you know, letting people know that this is happening in Newmarket, is it doable?
Yep, we can do that.
Awesome. I really want to know if the person got the cat back, Town Council wants to know, let's know. Also, really, thank you, yes, to the police department and the fire department, and I had some comments there, but I just wanted to shout out a thank you to the Newmarket Community Church for continuing to help Newmarket citizens in need, particularly during the cold, you know, when the citizens' heat wouldn't work, they stepped right in, and we're just so appreciative. I didn't have, this may be a question that you can answer, and it may not, Town Manager, when we're talking about sort of the, you know, the discontinuation of the, of the Exeter, you know, the Exeter paramedic kind of service, one of the things that I know that Director Malaski had mentioned is that, yeah, we can pick up the slack between us and Jones, and I guess my only question or wondering or maybe concern is that, how do we know we can handle, we can handle any kind of overflow? And I think my question is, like, do we know all of the 911 calls that are, that are, you know, put through, and do we know all of the people that were transferred to hospitals? And as a result of that, do we know that we, like, we have enough capacity to cover, who would have covered everybody who was sent to a hospital this month? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we, so, do we always have enough ambulance, paramedics, EMTs on staff at one point in time to cover all calls in the town? Answer to that in every municipality is no. Sometimes they're already on another call and we have to ask for mutual aid.
Yep.
That would come from either Stratum, Epping, Lee, but number one is always McGregor, which is Durham's. If they need a paramedic, currently, you, they call Exeter ALS, which is the paramedic service from the hospital, and what you see is not an ambulance come out, but you see a truck, like an SUV, and that gives it a paramedic on scene.
Okay.
Few years ago, we started adding paramedics to our own ranks, so we don't not rely on Exeter ALS as much, again, unless we don't have a paramedic onboard. I have a scanner in my office, so I hear ambulance calls and runs. Very rarely do we hear to have to retone because of lack of staff, like, if there's nobody on or nobody doing the per diem, that was one of the benefits of adding the per diem positions. And again, the only time you really hear somebody needed to, for mutual aid is if we are out, we're already at the hospital, because sometimes they, they don't go to Exeter, they may have to drive to Dover or Portsmouth to the hospitals as well.
Okay. Yeah, that was just my big concern, like, do, how, like, how do we know that we, that between us and Durham, we have enough capacity?
And like I said, it's, we're all in mutual aid agreements, and say if Durham had to come to Newmarket, then Dover jumps into Durham, and we do the same if there's a fire, so.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you for that clarification, I really appreciate it. Oh, thanks to the Public Works folks for fixing the Cedar, Cedar Street line, water main break, I know that was kind of a pain. It looked like the snow events were lower, I did have one question on the, on the Public Works reports, they, several of them, like on page 32, 33, 34, were referring to, it looked like December 2024 and December 2025, and I'm pretty sure that they're supposed to be 23.
Yes, that's probably just a-
But I just wanted to confirm-
Yes.
-to make sure I wasn't reading it incorrectly. Okay, okay, then those all, those all make sense.
I think it's probably fiscal year-
Okay.
-on there.
And then I was really pleased to see that the planning board approved, is approving some additional, you know, like, housing, like, some apartments going into that building that's been just kind of hanging out there, I thought that was really, really great, and really appreciate the ongoing work on the master plan, and also wanted to say thanks so much to Channel 8, I've been seeing a lot of the videos announcing what's happening on Newmarket, sort of as I've gone into my social media feeds. I know that when they started to undertake this, when we undertake anything, it's a learning curve, and I've seen these continue to get more engagement, and they, they look very polished, and just really appreciate the, both the effort on Channel 8 to get the word out there, and of course, on their, their analytics. It's nice to see, you know, the, it's nice to see the open rate and the click-through rate on the, on the newsletters, and just, yeah, just really appreciate all the work they're doing.
I forgot one announcement, because I was flipping through the department head report just now and saw the picture of the railroad bridge burning. Follow-up on the New Road Bridge, there, as again, this is not our bridge, it's in the town of Newfields, there is question on who actually owns the bridge, and that's what's trying to determine, is whether or not it's the state of Hampshire or the town of Newfields, however, tomorrow, the bridge will be closed from 11:00 to 3:00, and wanted to do some engineering studies on it after it got hit by the crew that were going to fix the other bridge a few weeks ago. So, New Road Bridge will be closed tomorrow afternoon.
11:00 to 3:00?
11:00 to 3:00.
Okay, that is good to know, thank you, Town Manager. Any other comments on the department reports?
It's quick. Hungry? Yep.
Okay, then we will move on to committee reports, are there any committee reports this evening?
Yes.
Councilor Ward?
Yes, myself and Councilor Lamontina were at the Conservation Commission on the 9th for a joint discussion on the Riverfront Advisory Committee results from the Riverfront Charette and planning for downtown Riverfront. Councilor Lamontina can give his talk about what he experienced there in a sec. Basically, we just talked about connectivity, climate change, making more park and art space in Shandau Park, questions on whether Shandau Park should be under the purview of conservation, or if it should be better, be better served under either the Recreation or Department of Public Works, just given the fact that so many events go on there, and it makes more sense for someone working there. There was also some talk about Heron Point, and possibly, instead of building a bridge to it, which is something that people have talked about with the river, but we came to the conclusion that'd be too expensive, bit of an eyesore, and cause a lot of trouble, can't really show super well, but building a trail, and there are talks about talking to the property owner, so, instead of, and you can pass that around. And, yes, and also GeoSync Incorporated is doing a stormwater sampling at Moonlight Brook, there is concern to any plan to update or renovate Shandau Park will first have to deal with Moonlight Brook, and Bart suggested the Riverfront Advisory Committee become a full committee. And, oh, the Wigan Boardwalk will be done in March, we missed the cold weather, or our cutoff, as you can tell. Oh, and a final, and finally, Sue Frick, our, and our scribe for the Conservation Commission is retiring after several years, so we just wanted to say thank you to Sue Frick for all her hard work. And now I get to keep talking, because it's Budget Committee. We just basically went over the school budget warrant articles, and we went over the town budget warrant articles that we are about to talk about today, so, and Chairman Chris Wolf will be retiring from, on the chair this year, so we'll be looking for a new chair starting soon.
Today.
Today.
He resigned.
He resigned today, yes. All right, and that is it for me.
Thank you, Councilor Ward. And questions for Councilor Ward on either the Conservation Commission or Budget Committee meeting?
Just, when we have the deliberative session, whatever, will the Budget Committee chair won't be there, or who's gonna run that?
They have to vote on a new one. About everything-
The vice chair?
Yeah.
Will take, will fall in.
Other questions for Councilor Ward?
Yep, sorry, the, you mentioned there was a recommendation for the Riverfront Advisory Committee to become a full committee, could, do you have any more background on that? What was the justification for that recommendation?
And the idea was, and this is kind of brought up a bit in passing, but it was considered, the Riverfront Advisory Committee does technically have an end date to it, where it will end, but the argument is simply that the riverfront's always going to be there, and there's also talk about making it, expanding it, so it talks more about the downtown area as well can extend, so, that was just something that was pitched as an idea, making it permanent and maybe expanding its reach to cover activities in the downtown, but again, that was just an idea that was pitched.
Other questions for Councilor Ward? Okay, seeing none, are there any other committee reports this evening? Councilor Lamontina?
Yeah, my turn. I have some community power updates, so the new six-month rate effective February 1st have been announced. The default residential rate, granted basic, is basically gonna be the same as EverSource, it's gonna be 8.900 cents, where EverSource is gonna be 8.901. Commercial rates vary from month to month with community power, but on average, they also average out to about 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour, and we're working with Tim to get something out on Facebook to announce what the rates are. So as of January 1st, we have 3,906 accounts around Newmarket Community Power, that's 73% of all meters in Newmarket are Newmarket Community Power, that's up 3% since November. As of December 1st, we've saved Newmarket residents $103,000 compared to what they would have paid with EverSource, and as of December 1st, those Newmarket accounts that are on a higher level of clean energy, they prevented 17 tons of CO2 from being emitted into the atmosphere. So there's a potential issue for community power in that the Public Utilities Commission is thinking about letting the for-profit agencies, EverSource, Liberty, and Unitil, thinking about letting them basically come up with any rate that they want for electric supply, and then if they underestimate that rate, that they can recover the monies through the standard fee, which goes, standard cost fee, which gets spread out to everybody, even those people that aren't getting their supply from EverSource. So, Community Power's working to lobby against that, but just, you know, if that goes to, comes out, or goes for tuition, whatever, I don't know, it kind of kills Community Power, because Community Power has no way of, you know, recovering those rates, and not like the for-profit groups here.
Questions for Councilor Lamontina? Councilor Ward?
So, if I understand what you're saying, if this gets passed, EverSource can say, hey, our rates are much lower than Community Power's, people go to them, and then afterwards they say, oh, we've actually undersold, we need actually more money back, so we can get a fee, and so they can charge the extra, so basically they can say it's a lower price, and then they can recover the cost-
That's correct.
-later. Oh, that's, that sounds ethical. Yeah.
It gives them a distinct advantage over, you know, and it basically kills competition.
Yeah.
Which sounds like the point. Councilor Dorblin?
Is there a timeframe, are there hearings scheduled? What, where is this?
Right now, it has not been assigned to House Bill, okay? It's something that the Public Utilities has proposed for EverSource and Unitil and Liberty to come up with a plan on how to do that. There is a, it hasn't been assigned to House Bill yet, but- There is a, it hasn't been assigned a house bill yet, but something to kill that, or prevent that from happening, so. It's an LS, it's called an LSR.
Yep.
Um, I am in touch with, um, our representatives, so if it does, um, come up as a house bill, that, they, get them to support that and prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
Other questions for Counsel Lomatina? Okay, um, any other committee reports this evening? Counsel Drum?
Um, just a quick one. The, um, Transportation Committee met last Wednesday, um, at this time. And, um, we spent, again, our, um, most of our time, um, on the update of the Transportation Chapter of the Master Plan, and, um, we're making good progress, and hopefully we'll, um, finish that up, um, within the next two meetings.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Drum. Any questions for Counsel Drum? Okay, any other committee meetings? Quite a few to catch up on. All right, we are going to move right along to resolutions and ordinances in the first reading. And, town manager, I believe you've got some, some requests to suspend the rules on these?
Yes, we're requesting to suspend the rules on all three, because we need to have them approved, so they can go on the ballot, on the warrant.
Okay, then at this time, um, I would accept a motion to suspend the rules on Resolution 24, 2025-26, 2024, 2025-27, and 2024, 2025-28.
I will make a motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, um, Counsel Lomatina. Um, any discussion on, um, from counselors on whether to suspend the rules this evening?
Just for clarification, what you're suspending the rules is to just, to, we're going to go the second reading and just vote on it this evening.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Glazier?
Aye.
Counsel Lomatina?
Aye.
Counsel Donblum?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. Okay. Then, the first item on the agenda will be Resolution 2024, 2025-26. And this is for the issuance of up to $5,500,000 in bonds or notes for the purpose of replacing the Bay Road Main and Pump Station improvements. Since we're voting on this this evening, to read into the record?
Yep, the, um, it's up to, I mean, they're pretty lengthy, you don't need to do it if it's, I mean, everyone's going to see it. Anyways, but what you do now is accept a motion to approve.
Okay, then at this time, I would accept the motion to approve Resolution 2024, 2025-26.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Dr. Greg, would you like to speak to this?
As you probably remember, the Bay Road Main Pump Station, uh, was made in the early 20th century. Over a year ago, it's something that's, uh, fixing it, it's a very poor condition, it needs to be replaced, so this is to replace that. We have received, uh, an offer for the SRF for $454,000 to do engineering on it. If this passes, we will have that. It also has loan forgiveness. We also have applied for, uh, congressional direct spending, uh, which we should hear, um, in, around April. And that's for about $1.1 million grant. Uh, in addition, we also plan on applying for more grants in, um, June, which, those we hear in August, too, so, that's the plan.
Any questions for Dr. Free? Counsel Drum?
If, if, if all were to come to pass, what, what, what do you think, um, the total in grants is possible? While, are we approaching the, um, the, the total number, or are we, um, at about 50%? Or where, where might we be?
That's really hard to tell.
Okay.
I mean, you hope for as much as you can, but I, I can't guess.
Okay.
Other questions for Dr. Free? Okay, um, any discussion on this, um, resolution, counselors? Okay, um, well, I'm pleased that we're bringing this to the council. Um, it's, it needs to be done, and, and I appreciate, um, I appreciate the director's work to, again, care for the purse of, of New Market, New Market citizens, in, um, in getting as much loan forgiveness and, and, and grant dollars as, as possible. Seeing no additional comments, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Glazier?
Aye.
Counsel Lomatina?
Aye.
Counsel Donblum?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, and at this time, we will move on to Resolution 2024, 2025-27. And this is for the issuance of $100,000 bonds for the purpose of planning and design of the Bay Road Force Main replacement. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Counsel Ward. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counsel Lomatina. Turn it back over to you, sir.
This is part of Bay Road, uh, for Spain. Uh, there's an offer from the, through the SRF program. It's a planning grant. It's 100% loan forgiveness. It's $100,000. We're actually doing the preliminary design currently right now, so if this vote passes, all that money we're spending, that $100,000 comes back to us, and then the loan gets forgiven.
Excellent. Questions for Dr. Greg? Counsel Lomatina?
Do you know, um, do you have an idea how you're going to do it now? What's going to happen?
We're, we're still working on negotiations through, whether, what route we're going to take.
Okay, so it's still kind of 50-50?
Yes, it's, we're working on it.
Okay, all right, I'll take that.
Other questions for Dr. Greg? Okay, and any discussion on this resolution? Again, with, um, particularly with loan forgiveness, this seems like a pretty easy decision, um, at least for me. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Glazier?
Aye.
Counsel Lomatina?
Aye.
Counsel Donblum?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Okay, and the third resolution this evening to consider is Resolution 2024, 2025-28. And this is the Cushing Road and Leverland Drive Stormwater Improvement Project. And at this time, I would accept a motion to approve this resolution.
I, I will second.
Thank you, Counselor White, and thank you, Counselor.
Nor.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, Counsel Donblut, and thank you, Counsel Lomatina. And at this time, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. This project, this proposed project, is kind of the, the next phase, next step in addressing some stormwater management improvements on the segment of Cushing Road and Leverland Drive. Um, it's an area of roadway that's within the Moody Point development. And, um, we are currently, have been for the past year, working on a stormwater planning project with Underwood Engineers to evaluate potential improvements and work with Moody Point, um, Community Association to identify preferred stormwater treatment options for this. So, we have an identified alternative and cost estimate for implementation of that alternative in this proposed project. With, is for, uh, $1,440,000 to do the final design for that, um, preferred alternative and construction. So, this will cover final design permitting and construction to implement those stormwater improvements on those roadways. And we applied, we've been offered a, have a Clean Water SRF, uh, Clean Water State Revolving Fund loan with D, New Hampshire DES, with an offer of 25% principal forgiveness on that, so we intend to pursue that for this project.
Any questions, Counsel Lomatina?
Are there potential grants that might come along that you might be able to apply for?
Yes, there may be. Um, I, we haven't pursued any of those yet, but that's something we'll certainly look into.
Any idea how much cover?
Not at this time, but we'll, as Sean said, try to get to each other.
Other questions? I guess my only question is, um, is what's the, what's the, what's the issue that we're trying to solve with, with this particular project? In, we're talking about improvements. Improvements over what? What is the, what's the, I can't see, what's the problem? Because it sounds very, it sounds very flip, um, but it, but it's, it's not intended to be.
Right, so what we're trying to do is manage roadway runoff primarily, uh, stormwater runoff in a better way to reduce erosion, roadside erosion, road shoulder erosion, and with that community being directly on Great Bay, there's a, uh, very high potential of pollutants from roadways and road shoulders to be transported into the bay. So, this would provide stormwater treatment so that it is captured and treated before being discharged to the bay.
Thank you for walking me through that. I appreciate it. Okay, um, any other questions for the town engineer? Okay, um, any discussion on this resolution? All right, I will just say that, um, I'm a, I'm a huge fan of things we can do to protect, um, protect the environment and, um, and the land surrounded in the waterways for New Market citizens, both ones today and ones to come, so, um, so I'm in favor of this. Seeing no other comments, if you could call the roll, please. Counsel Glazier?
Aye.
Counsel Lomatina?
Aye.
Counsel White?
Aye.
Counsel Ward?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-0. All right, that's the end of our resolutions and ordinances, um, in the first and second reading this evening. We are now moving on to, um, new business and correspondence. Is there any correspondence to the town council to be read into the record this evening?
There is none.
Okay, um, and now, um, are there any comments, closing comments by town counselors this evening? All right, um, I would just, you know, kind of remind folks to, um, to attend that public hearing on the 29th, and make sure to attend the deliberative session on the 5th?
First.
First. Attend the deliberative session on the first, at 9:00 AM, and that's the, the high school.
Yep.
Okay, excellent. Okay. Our next meeting is, um, will be the public hearing on the warrant articles, and that is January 29th, and that will be at 6:00 PM. And the next town council meeting is February 5th, 2025. And if there are no objections, I will consider as adjourned.